Good evening, everybody. Before the start of tonight's meeting, we met in executive session. We discussed a few items of real estate and litigation. We also talked about appraisal of a property which is still in abeyance. The other things we talked about were the how we're going to conduct meetings going forward. Representative Alman's administrative assistant, Linda McNeil, was very helpful to me today by saying that we can meet electronically. We're not quite set up for that yet. We do have GoToMeetings app now available, but we haven't quite figured out how we have public comment and the like if we have an electronic meeting. However, the board in this discussion in an executive session, we all feel confident that we are safe in this system. We're far apart. Everything's been wiped down and anesthetized or not anesthetized, antiseptic to whatever that word is. This the sanitized, thank you. The staff has been working as if nothing else was happening. All the projects and all the work is going forward, so there's been no interruption to the work of the township. The only change is that we ask the public to just try and stay away. Everything can be done online, call ahead, and if you have to come in person, the chief, the police department has allowed us to have an administrative person in the police side, which is more safe to public. They can't like come, there's not as much access. It's a smaller access area, so the six feet distance is better able to be realized over there. So, thank you, Chief, for allowing that. It's good partnership there. And I want to also thank the staff, Dave, your people, Karen, and all the department heads for persevering. Only one person isn't here, but we shouldn't, she shouldn't be working at this location. If it comes to where some of us become sequestered, we will continue operations electronically and remotely. All the supervisors at this point intend to be at all the meetings, but if somebody has to stay put, then we'll have them here virtually. So, we have no anticipation of closing operations and we're all going to participate as fluently as possible. The other day, March 12th, we issued a declaration, and I want to read this public service announcement again. It's been published, but we, this is from us, was decided on, like I said, the 12th. We had a meeting with all the department heads, the chief, Stephanie, and the code enforcement, and I was there as director of public safety on the phone, that we have, you know, because of the coronavirus, of course, we've closed down our recreation programs and the parks, the dog park, the Kids Castle, and we're telling the public to stay away from Kids Castle, the dog parks, and those are public places that we control, and we've got them closed now. All parks and recreation programs will have stopped until April 30th, and if we have to extend that beyond April 30th, we will. We're going to, we have to hold our supervisors' meetings, which I've just discussed, and we have to hold zoning hearing board meetings, so we will continue with that work. The public is always invited to participate before the meetings on, you know, the previous Friday before the meetings on Tuesday. There's always opportunity to comment on the agenda, and we will consider comments. And if you want to comment after a meeting, we will consider those comments at the following meeting. So, to the extent we can have any public comment, that's the way we're going to do it for now. And the, like I said, the administrative offices are going to remain open. We are streamed live tonight, and we repeated our DTV repeats on these meetings on Verizon and Comcast twice a day, every day until the next meeting. So, there's plenty of opportunity to see what's going on and stay connected to Doylestown Township, and we encourage everyone to do so. One other thing we've discussed, and I'll just move on. Our next meeting on April 7th has a, is at 5:00, but at 3:00 we have scheduled a budget work session, and it may be at this point that we consider postponing that budget work session at 3:00 on April 7th. What's the pleasure of the board?
I think we can postpone it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Well, I guess we can call that. All in favor of postponing the budget meeting on April 7th at 3:00?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, with that, I'm going to move on to the announcements. Our next meeting is April 7th at 5:00. As we just devoted, the budget meeting will be canceled for this time, and if you've got potholes, call the state roads, 1-800-FIX-ROAD for Township roads, call the, or go on site, go online, we have a list of the Township roads, and then make your complaints accordingly. Next item on the agenda is the minutes approval for the March 3, 2020 meeting. Everyone had a chance to see them and review them?
Yep.
Yep? Changes, corrections, any noted? Hearing none? Is there a motion to approve the minute meeting, the minutes from?
A motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. A happy correspondence from the Pennsylvania Association of Township Supervisors. Again, we are so boring, but we keep winning these statewide awards for our communications. So, we won one, two, the first three awards you can get. We won an award first place for our Parks and Rec program guide. We won second place for our video that we created for Preserving the Past, Embracing the Future, that went into the Time Capsule, so we won a second place prize for that. And then we won third place prize for miscellaneous, you know, publications. So, at the meeting in P sets in May, we're going to get onstage with the three new awards for Doylestown Township. And our communication system has just got to be, well, obviously, it's like the best in the state because we keep getting these awards, so I'm very proud of our efforts. So, thank you, and thank the staff for these awards. Next item on the agenda is the report from the solicitor.
I would like to report to you on the township.
Okay. Did you hear that?
Microphone.
You have to go to the microphone.
There's one right there.
Somebody wiped that microphone off, sir?
Yes, just wiped it down with Lysol.
I have nothing to report at the moment, but I have other items on the agenda. We get to those topics.
Thank you. Okay. How about Township Engineer? Now, you know, you do what he just did.
Nothing at this time, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Chief?
Yes, there's a memo in your packet requesting tenure be granted to Officer Carr. Officer Carr was hired in March of 2019. He's been under the supervision of Officer Jared Courts for the last year during his field training program. He successfully completed all phases of training. I requested the board grant him tenure this evening.
I'd like to happily make that motion that Officer Carr be granted tenure following his successful training program.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Tell Officer Carr we say congratulations and welcome to the, for real, for the family. Okay. Director of Operations, look at you.
I have a few items for your approval. The 2020 material, road materials bid was advertised by the Bucks County Consortium of Local Governments. Seven bids were received. I am asking for the boards to accept pricing from the following companies for the purchase of roadway materials for the Road Department and the Parks Department and facilities. Eureka Stone Quarry Incorporated in Chalfont, Hanson Aggregates, BMC Incorporated in Newtown, PA, Plumstead Materials, Division of Naesville Materials in Doylestown, PA, Miller Materials, Division of Naesville Materials, Doylestown, PA. I'm asking for the board's approval to accept their 2020, 2021 pricing.
Okay. There are, how many? Four? Four applications for awards. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second. Okay, we're doing all four at the same time?
Yes, for all four.
Thank you. Five, I think. Five, sorry. One?
Oh, yeah, five. For all five.
And I'll second that.
For all five.
All right, there's a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We received bids for the 2020 lawn maintenance program. We basically teamed with DTMA to put out solicitation for bids to get better pricing. This is a recommendation for the Township award only. On March 10th, when the bids were opened, seven bids were received for the 2020 lawn maintenance contract. The parent low bidder, Cyron Company, was a low bidder, however, they submitted an incomplete bid. I spoke with Mr. Garten, and based upon our discussion, his recommendation, I'm making a recommendation that we award to the second low bidder, which is M&amp;M Landscaping LLC out of Lansdale for the base bid amount of $92,260, the, an ad alternate for the basin mowing at $1,120, and the park ad alternates, which are for selective mowings if requested by the sports teams that we allow them to use the fields. So, I'm asking for the board's approval, M&amp;M Landscaping Incorporated, for the 2020 lawn bid for the Township only.
Okay. Thanks, Dave, for checking up on that. It is appropriate that we award to the most complete and most complete bid, and if it's M&amp;M, even though it might be a little higher than Cyron, that's what we have to go with? That's what we're supposed to do. So, is there a motion to approve M&amp;M Landscaping for the bid of $93,380, which would include the alternate number one basin? I'll make the motion. Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
You have some questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All in favor of the motion with the second?
Aye.
Thank you.
The last item is for the Parks Department Multi-Use Vehicle Purchase Recommendation. Part of the 2020 budgeting process last year, $60,000 was budgeted for a new parks maintenance vehicle. It's allowed us to do maintenance on the trails to move around quicker during regular maintenance, as well as during storm events and things to clean up, as well as plowing. $60,000 was budgeted for this year's budget. However, the price came in, which is a bid through the PA Marketplace, which is another co-op purchasing program that is through the Pennsylvania Department of General Services that we, as COSARS members, are allowed to purchase through. The total amount is for $64,887.87. It is going to be purchased through Clark Equipment Company, doing business as Bobcat Company. I'm asking for the board's approval for that purchase.
I have a question. The base price of the vehicle is $60,000, correct?
No, it's not $60,000. Entire, the entire price for the purchase, which includes the base vehicle plus additional parts, which the quote was attached to your packet, is, the total price is $64,000. The actual base price, I can't say for sure, but it's probably around $53,000 with additional pieces.
So, that's more than we budgeted for, but you're saying it also includes the snow blade at 70, that, is all that included with that $64,000?
Yeah, there's additional add-ons, but the major pieces that we're going to purchase would be the snow plow V-blade and then the brush to clean the trails and move throughout.
Is that what you call the tool cat?
The entire piece is called the Bobcat Tool Cat.
Okay. All right. I think I'm not confused anymore. All right. Is there a motion to approve this?
I had one more question about that. With the resolution we have coming up later for the Ready for 100 Resolution about eventually replacing our equipment, that kind of thing, what's the expected lifespan of this machine?
My guys are telling me about 10 years plus.
Okay.
We're going to, you know, we take care of our equipment, and this is going to be primarily maintenance in the parks, so, yeah, we're probably looking 10 years plus.
And is it, is it gasoline, natural gas?
It is gas.
Okay.
It is gas. Unfortunately, you know, with the amount of work we have to do on pushing snow and moving things, you know, you can't go with the horsepower we need. We have to go with a fossil fuel, unfortunately, piece of equipment.
Yeah, I assume we were still a little ways off from an electric vehicle, but I was wondering, just timeline-wise, when we might be able to move off of that.
There's that low voice again. You have to talk into the microphone.
Will do.
When it comes to vehicle and equipment purchases, is that something that we put and take into consideration as, to measure whether we can use alternate, alternative fuels or electric? Or is it something that we can start doing?
We can start doing, yes. I think, you know, we look at, you know, other vehicles that are outside public works because unfortunately, they are, you know, they are, you know, workhorses, if you want to use that word. We, you know, we can look at, you know, like the manager's vehicle, the chief's vehicle, maybe the code enforcement vehicle, vehicles that we will look to go more electric on in the future when we do replace those, then unfortunately, public works. But there are, and Dan Markeloff, our fleet manager, has looked at these, and the problem is that the conversions are expensive. It's somewhat still new technology, but as we, you know, move forward, it gets better and cheaper. Compressed natural gas is one way to go, but the issue is fueling. We, you know, there's not many fueling stations around. I know that SEPT is going to that, but, you know, they have the ability to have a big fleet and have the ways to fuel those vehicles. For us, it's potentially a large expense.
Okay, well, let's pass on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the Bobcat. I'll second that.
All right. Call any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Before I lose you, thinking forward, do we have an opportunity to use a electric, can we put in an electric charging station just as we anticipate?
Yes, we actually, we have something set up so we can put something in the back for our fleet. We've talked about, actually with the EAC, about putting something in the parks and having it for the public.
Yeah, I'm thinking something that would be available to the public.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, uh-huh. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Township Manager. Anything from the Township Manager?
I have nothing at this time.
All right. Supervisors' comments. Ryan, let's start this side.
All right. Just a couple of comments. First, I want to thank Stephanie and the Township for all their efforts and the way they've handled the coronavirus pandemic, the communications they've given through social media and the website have been fantastic. I've been using them and relying on them for things pursuant to Doylestown Township. I also want to thank businesses that before Governor Wolf put through that nonessential businesses had to close and made a suggested, a suggestion on that, I want to thank the businesses that took that first step before they were mandated to do that. I think it's very important that if you are a business owner and you have the ability to let your employees work remote, please do so. I also want to encourage people while they're sitting at home and they're looking for things to do and they're not out at our local small businesses to shop online, to order takeout. All of our restaurants are still operating in a takeout sense. You can pull up, and a lot of them are actually letting you pay, and they'll bring it right out to your car. So, let's make sure that we're giving our small businesses, restaurants that have closed down, let's give them support right now to get them through this tough time. I think it's important to stress, we talked a little bit about it before this meeting, that town was packed on Friday and Saturday night with kids all over the place. Schools are closed, and because schools are closed, it's not, they're not closed because of a snow day, they're closed because of a global pandemic, which means if the schools are closed, we're not encouraging you to get your kids together for playdates or have them gallivanting around town in large groups all throughout the town. And so, I can't stress enough, my kids are home, they've been at home since Friday, they are incredibly bored, we're trying to keep them stimulated, but, I mean, it's what we have to do right now. You hear a lot of talk right now about flattening the curb. I was privy to be on a call yesterday with the head of the CDC, and a lot of what he talked about, and if you're watching the news, you know, we are 10 days behind Italy and where they are. And because of some of the things that they didn't do, they are in a place where their numbers rose exponentially. Two nights ago, they had over 3,500 cases in 24 hours, and hospitals can't keep up with that influx. So, it's on all of us to look out for the greater community, to look out for the greater good, and not look at ourselves and say, hey, I'm young, I'm not going to be affected. Like, we all have to play our part. I know you guys have heard this once, twice, 1,000 times, but I'm going to say it again. There is also, for those that may not know, there is a testing center now at Doylestown Hospital. They have put up a tent, you can get tested there. You can only get tested there if you get a script from your doctor. So, don't pull up to the tent and say, I want to get tested. But if you're experiencing any sort of, if you're over the age of 65, the, a few days ago, it was over the age of 65 with a cough and a fever of over 103. It is now a cough and a fever of 99, so they have changed those guidelines. So, please call your doctor, and if you're feeling unwell, and, you know, call your doctor and just kind of explain the symptoms. They said they'd rather be talking to people and kind of advising them whether or not they should be tested than people saying, eh, you know, I probably don't have it, it's just a cold. That's all, but, I mean, again, I can't stress enough the idea that we all, you know, we're doing it here tonight, we have an obligation to be here, but those that can do things from their house, please, please, I'm urging you to do so.
Dan?
Yeah, I'll start with just sharing the sentiments that we've heard on the board about the great work our Township staff have been doing and the steps we're taking. You know, things have been moving rapidly over the past week. I thought we were going to be talking a lot about this tonight. We're already moving, we're already ahead of things that the county's doing, so, and that's a testament to our Township staff and them being knowledgeable about the situation. The only committee I have to report on tonight is that the Pebble Ridge, Wood Ridge Subcommittee for the Sewers, that meeting has been postponed until later since we are not holding meetings right now, and as a result of that, we will not have a bill coming due for this period, but I, that doesn't mean we're off scot-free, it just gets pushed down the road.
Jen, you got anything?
Well, first, I'd like to say happy St. Patrick's Day. We're not celebrating the way we normally do, but I hope everybody gets a chance to enjoy their favorite beverage and maybe do a little dance at home. I want to also echo the earlier comments, thanking the staff, thanking our police force, thanking the hospital workers, thanking the teachers for dealing with this instantaneous online education that they have to do with the kids, and especially those small businesses. We've, I've definitely heard from the community, people are suffering that are small business owners, and the people that have voluntarily closed down prior to Governor Wolf's request. I really consider them very patriotic for doing that because it's a real hardship. I also wanted to say, there's a lot of people that are struggling with this. It takes a toll mentally on a lot of people. There's a lot of online therapy groups that you can join or speak to a therapist online that can help you get through this, so please reach out if you're feeling that way. There's a lot of online resources for you.
Thank you. Nance?
Hi. Happy St. Patty's Day. I came ready, but no beverages. What I just wanted to say, sort of go off what Ryan said, I think she was very eloquent and covered a lot of things, is thank you to the Township Manager and to our staff. We've really been above and beyond in preparing and keeping us all abreast of what the decisions are and how the Township's moving forward. I think the other thing I'd like to mention is, let's not forget about, I'm personally impacted as well, there's people that are in nursing homes, there are no visitors in nursing homes, so if your kids are bored, make some cards, drop them off, there's ways that you can give back to the community, so just be mindful of those types of things, too. I think there's maybe limited visitation as well at the hospital, so we have to remember there's a lot of people walking around that are compromised. You may not see it, but we need to all be mindful, and that's why I think Ryan had such a strong message, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. And I had another conversation with Linda McNeil today, the administrative or legislative assistant to Representative Alman, because an individual I know, driver's license is going to expire in between a trip to and from on an airplane. So, if that's going to happen to you, please note that there is an extension for getting your license renewed should you be expiring in the next month or two. So, they're, they are extending that, those time, those deadlines, so, and thank you, Linda McNeil, for that information. Oh, and they will be approved and accepted by TSA, so that's all, that's all said and done. The other thing I have is, before we got together during executive session, I handed out the disaster, Doylestown Township Declaration of Disaster Emergency that I discussed when we first started here tonight, and this has to be ratified by the board, and I would ask that the, somebody, that the board consider this, and let's get it approved so that we can, you know, do legally what we've already done.
I'll make the motion to ratify the disaster emergency declaration.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That bit of business is done. Okay. Next item on the agenda, new business, the Callan Tract Revised Minor Subdivision Plan Prior Street Maintenance Agreement. Mr. Garten?
If I may, again, Dave and Andrea Callan submitted a subdivision plan to the Township seeking to divide their property into three lots. That plan was approved as a preliminary and final subdivision plan back on October 17th of 2017, and now desire to amend that plan so as to convey approximately one-plus acres to the adjoining Tabor tract. Or to recall, that was part of the Tabor tract approval in September, so it's not a new concept, but the Callan plans have to be revised to reflect the conveyance of that approximately one acre to the adjoining property. Plans were prepared by Protract Engineering, were dated January 26, 2017, and last revised today. You're inclined to approve the amended plan, it will be subject to the following conditions. One, continued compliance with the prior conditions of approval noted in correspondence from the solicitor Nicholas T. Rose on October 18, 2017. Two, compliance with the comments received from Boucher and James on today's date and yesterday. Next, recording of the appropriate deeds of conveyance. And lastly, all costs incurred by the Township connection will be paid by the applicant. Other than that, I think that covers the proposal.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Revised Minor Subdivision Plan articulated by our solicitor?
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm calling, any questions, discussion? I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Four and one abstention. I have to abstain for this one and the next vote.
The last item for me to discuss is that the board approved in September the Westrum Project, which is the adult housing project on the Tabor site, and before you are the development financial security agreements that I prepared that have been reviewed by the various staff. We didn't have the final numbers until just recently from Boucher and James, but I would request the board approve the agreements and authorize the vice chair to sign those agreements once they're finalized with the final numbers.
Okay. In consideration of the development agreements as articulated by the solicitor, is there a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Any questions, conversation, discussion? Hearing none, calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
It's four and one abstention, and I'll reiterate, my family has an interest in this property, that's why I have to abstain. Thank you. All right. Now, the highlight of the meeting. So long, guys. The resolution setting aside the goal, setting forth the goals of Doylestown Township to the 100 renewable energy for all purposes, no later than 2050. Thank you for preparing this resolution. I think it's really well-written, I think it's very complete. The only comment I would have is that we are not the state of Pennsylvania, we are the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that I would change those, that from state to Commonwealth in those two instances where they refer to the state of Pennsylvania. Instead, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. What do you guys think of this resolution? All good?
I'm very excited about it.
I'm very excited, too. Everyone good?
Yeah, aside from that change, all good.
All right. We ready to go with this? Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Would that change, though? We are Commonwealth. I can explain to you why at some other time. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, zoning hearing board application of the Shum &amp; Long property, 14 Greenway Drive.
They're seeking variance for an expansion on the impervious surface for installation of a pool. I would recommend that we leave this matter to the zoning. I would recommend that we leave this matter to the zoning here.